Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Jack Currier. I serve as the Chair of the Nashua Zoning Board. This is the Nashua Zoning Board. First, I'll introduce the other members here tonight. To my right is Mary Ellen McKay, who serves as our clerk. Going around the table is Esther, and I don't want to pronounce her last name because I might get it wrong. You want to give me a go with that?
Boris.
Esther Boris. It's our first meeting tonight, joining us, which we appreciate. She's going to be not voting tonight. She's going to be taking it in and participating in the discussion. And then continuing around the table, we have full member Steve Lionell and full member Rob Shaw and alternate member James or Jay Welch. To my left is Mr. Carter Falk. He serves on the city staff as Deputy Planning Manager. So first, if I ask if you have a cellphone, if you could please silence it or turn it off. Per law, this meeting is recorded, and the way we do it in Nashua is we record it in three venues. It's recorded on video, so there's cameras in the room on the walls. And I want to thank Tim in advance. He's the man behind the door who's capturing all the action. And it'll be replayed on Nashua Public TV later this week. This is also recorded on an audio tape. It's actually not a tape. It's all digital these days. But in a few days, you could go to NashuaNewHampshire.gov, and if you wanted to click down to the zoning board, you could stream this meeting. And then there's also a written transcript, and that written transcript is the actual official copy should a case go to court that would travel with the case to court. So because this is a completely transparent meeting and everything is recorded, I ask that there's only one person speaking at a time, and that person speaks into the microphone. If there's testimony that's not in a microphone, it's not heard, it's not picked up. And also, I'll be asking you, anybody who's starting to speak, if you could just say your name and address, so we'd have that on the record. The transcriber knows our voices, so that can easily be covered. But for the folks in the audience tonight, it's all new voices, so if you could start off with your name and address, I'd appreciate it. First, a few rules. By state law, this board needs to find five criteria in order to grant a variance. Now, a variance, the three cases tonight are all variances, and we have a thick book of zoning code, as pretty much every town in New Hampshire does. And so what's being requested tonight is a deviation from that code. And there's five criteria by state law that this board needs to find, and I'll briefly tick through those. Excuse me. Number one is that the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. Number two, that the spirit of the ordinance is observed. Number three is that substantial justice is done. Number four of five is that the values of surrounding properties are not diminished. And number five is that literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship. So again, this board, or any zoning board, would need to find that criteria to be met. And there's five voting members tonight, and in each case, three or more voting members must vote affirmatively to grant the variance. Now, the way we'll take testimony tonight per our bylaws is the applicant will speak first, and the applicant has up to 15 minutes to present their case. There is a written application for all three applications. Each of us members have received it a few days ago in the mail. Some of us, maybe all of us, might sidewalk to take a look, at least from the public street, at the case. So the applicant, the first part of this meeting, again, the applicant will speak for up to 15 minutes. That will be the start of what's called the public hearing. The public hearing is where we hear from you, the public. So after the applicant has spoken for up to 15 minutes, if the board has any questions, we'll likely ask those questions. Anybody else who's speaking in favor of the testimony will have up to five minutes to speak. We have a timer here to keep things on track. It'll be green for the first 14 minutes, yellow from minute 14 to 15, and then red at 15. And if you're still testifying, I'll likely ask you to stop. For folks after the applicant speaking in favor, they have five minutes. Then if there's any, after all affirmative testimony for each application is received, if there's any questions, concerns, or opposition to the application, those folks will have up to five minutes to present their case. If there's opposition that's brought forth, the applicant will then have up to five minutes to address the opposition. And again, if there is opposition, after the applicant has addressed it, one and only one person who has spoken in opposition will have the final five minutes at the microphone. After that, that will conclude the public hearing portion of each case, and then the public meeting will begin. And the public meeting is where the six of us will discuss the case, and five of us will be voting on it. And we'll likely come to a decision, which will be either to grant the variance, deny the variance, or perhaps table the variance. Sometimes that happens. So there's also, we're likely to come up with a decision on each case tonight. And if there's any aggrieved party, any aggrieved party with our decision, the next step for you would be to write a request for us to rehear the case. And if you're interested in applying for a rehearing, you could give Mr. Falk a call tomorrow. But what's important is any aggrieved party has up to 30 days, per state law, to file a rehearing request. So if a variance is, say, granted, and then 29 days later, a rehearing request comes in, if this board decides to rehear the case, that grant will be stayed until the case is reheared. So while we're coming up to a decision, it's really not final for 30 days, and it is final in 30 days if a rehearing request isn't received. If a rehearing request is received, and this board does not believe we got it wrong or need to rehear the case, the next step for the aggrieved party would be to take the matter to Hillsborough County Superior Court. Are there any questions for anyone in the audience, from anyone in the audience? I don't see any. Are we think we're ready to go? All right. Well, why don't we get going? And I'd like to open the public hearing on case number one. I'll read that into the record once I get my glasses on here. Case number one, the owner is Wesley and Elizabeth T-shirt, or tie shirt. I'm probably not pronouncing that correctly. 18 Hasselbrook Road is the address, and the description is to request a variance to encroach six feet into the 30-foot required rear yard setback to maintain and attach 13-foot by 14-foot sunroom. Who is here to present this case? Hi, sir. If you'd like to come to the microphone. I see you brought your variance sign, so I appreciate you having that out. If you could give us again your name and address. You might want to lift that microphone up. So, thank you.
You're welcome. My name is Wesley Tykert. I preside at 18 Hasselbrook Road here in Nashua.
Would you like to walk us through your application? Now, we all have copies of the written application. Would you like to touch on the major points of why you're asking?
Well, as far as the criteria that the state requires, I believe that, looking at the situation, that our sunroom does meet all the requirements because there's a, once you go past our fence line, there's a school, or there's a kind of a tree belt line, and then a parking lot. So we're not really going to create any hardships or any encumbrances on any of our neighbors. There's no loss of value or anything to our neighbor's properties. And when my wife and I purchased this property, it had been quite distressed for some period of time. And we've done a significant amount of upgrades and improvements on this home to make it a better fit for the neighborhood and for the community. And so as far as the building is concerned, it's very structurally sound, it's connected to our home. And it, I don't really know much of the history, because we just moved from another state to this state, so as far as the history of the home. But as far as the criteria, we really don't have any, I don't see any reason why we would have any issues with people having any grievances towards it.
Sure.
Yes.
And then one important point, I think, or at least I see in your written application, I don't think you mentioned, was that when you bought the house this July-
Yes, sir.
-that sunroom was already there?
Yes. It was an existing structure in the property, yes.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thanks. Let's see if anybody has any questions for you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Tykert?
What question? Do you know if there had been a building permit? Do you have any idea when this sunroom was put on?
To the best of my knowledge, sir, no. I don't know. As far as my understanding is initially, no, the building was not, there was no permit purchased by the original builder or the original owner of the property. So as far as I know, no. But that's the information that I received from my real estate agent. That's the only knowledge I have of that.
Any other questions? I guess I have a question. It's more clarification. When I took a look at your house, you were saying in your testimony that the school's behind it.
Yes, sir.
It looks like it goes up quite a ways. Topography, you know, goes uphill, and then there's, I guess you said, a line of trees.
Yes, sir.
So I was just saying, what I observed was, you know, even though there's an encroachment in the rear yard setback, I guess I'm concurring with what you're saying. My sense was, it doesn't impact anybody on the back side. It's, in fact, just going by in the street, you don't even know it's there.
No, no. The, you know, like I said, when we first purchased this home, we had no, really, ideas of what the sunroom, there was any issues at all with the sunroom. We didn't really find that out until much further in the process of purchasing the home, that there was going to be some sort of an issue. And then we talked with, because it had to be inspected, because the bank actually owned the title to the property at that time when we purchased it. So they told us that there was a possibility of a variance, but they didn't specifically say that there was until we found out approximately about a month before we closed, about 30 days before we closed, that there was going to be an issue. But we had it thoroughly inspected by a contractor, and we've had electricians in the house, checking all the electrical. We've had serious upgrades. We shifted to gas. We put in a gas heating system, a non-on-demand water system in the home. So we've done some serious, significant upgrades on the home, and have plans for a lot more. But that was, our knowledge of the variance was only 30 days prior to when we actually finalized the purchase.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Mr. Tykert? All right. You could have a seat. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor? Or are you leaving it in his hands? I guess that's the case. All right. Is there anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the proposed sunroom on Hasselbrook? Seeing no questions, concerns, or opposition, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts? Mr. Shaw?
Pretty straightforward. I think this is, I mean, I wouldn't have an issue whether this was really probably coming in for just the original request, let alone that it's already there. But I think a combination of where it is on the property and abutting the school, the impact of this encroachment, I see as minimal and non-impactful.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Welch?
Yeah. It's already there. I mean, it hasn't been a problem. So, you know, if it was there or not, I don't think it would be an issue, so I have no objection.
Mr. Lionell?
I don't see an issue there. I have this general problem with after-the-fact variances, but nothing can be done about that here, and certainly wasn't Mr. Tykert's fault, since he found out about it so soon, so recently. I agree that where it is and the topography and the distance, the trees separating from the school, it's not an issue.
Thank you. Ms. McKay?
I concur with my fellow board members. It's a non-issue, and the hardship would be if he had to take it down. It's not his fault. So I have no issue with this.
All right. And I feel the same way. I mean, you know, the topography and the fact that there's a, I don't think anybody on the other side could, you almost see the peak of the house, it seems. It goes up so high. If this were a new request for a new sunroom, I wouldn't look at it any different. I think we'd all see it the same, that it's really not any imposition and worthy of a variance for this bit of incursion. Did you want to jump in there, Esther, or just take it all in?
No, I actually agree.
Okay.
I think it's a non-issue. It already exists.
All right. Well, thank you for your opinion. And Mr. Shaw, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance as requested by Wesley and Elizabeth Tykert at 18 Hasselbrook Road. And the request is for an encroachment of six feet into the 30-foot required rear yard setback to maintain an existing 13-foot by 14-foot sunroom. This variance is needed for the applicant's proposed use of property, in this case, an existing usage, which came from pre-existing, when they purchased the home just a few months ago. This encroachment is fairly modest, as far as it's only six feet into the 30-foot setback. And we didn't discuss it earlier, but the other thing is, there is really very little other option anyhow for putting a structure like this on the back of the house with the kind of, both the placement of the house and the relative shallow depth of the lot. So some encroachment is pretty highly expected with any sort of, even a modest addition like this on a, on a structure on this lot. So there really is no other means of achieving this usage as stated. It is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. There's no indications of any negative effects on surrounding parcel property values. This is not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice will be served. And again, I move for approval of this variance.
So we have a motion on the table to approve, and Mr. Lionell seconds a motion. Any discussion on Mr. Shaw's motion? Seeing none, a show of hands in favor. So that's unanimous. That's five. So congratulations. Your application is approved. You're not really building anything. It's already there. Just remember, there is that 30-day window of appeal. It's not likely there's no one here in opposition, but you never know. So with that, I wish you good luck. Thanks for coming to Nashua. Maybe I'll see you around town. And with that, I'll close the public meeting on case number one. You could just leave the sign there, and we'll get it. All right. Moving right along, I'd like to open the public hearing on case number two. The owners are Scott and Donna Gordon. The address is 26 Syracuse Road. The request is a variance to encroach six feet into the 10-foot required left-side yard setback to replace an existing 8-by-16-foot deck with an 8-by-16-foot home addition. Hi, who's here to, hi, if you'd like to come to the microphone and just give us your name, and I'm guessing you're Scott Gordon?
Correct. Good evening. My name is Scott Gordon, 26 Syracuse Road. And yes, we are requesting to, for a variance to encroach on that, on the side setback to build a room, a four-seasons room. Unfortunately for us, when we purchased the house last April, it came with a deck, and we knew that we wanted to replace the deck. It was in very poor condition. So when the building was, the house was inspected, we weren't aware that there was any encroachment or any, to the setback on the deck. Neither our real estate agent nor the seller's real estate agent nor the seller disclosed the problem with the deck, not having been given, gotten a permit. So it was only when we knew we were going to build the deck earlier this year, when we hired a good contractor, and he went down to get the permit, he informed us that we needed the variance. So when I looked at it, I said, well, that deck's been there a while, and it certainly is in disrepair, and we're gonna, our intention is to make it into a nice room. The roof is going to match the roof on the house. The siding's going to match the siding on the house. It's going to be all done with the best of safety and up to the high standards with code. That's our intention. So we don't believe and we hope that no one would have a grievance for us to do this, considering that the deck has been there for, I don't know how many years, but the deck's been there. And so we're not going to be going to use any more space than is already occupied by the deck for this variance. And hopefully, you'll grant it for us.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Gordon? Mr. Lionell has a question for you.
In your, there's some inconsistency in your application as to exactly where the footprint of this room. I, when I walked the street and I saw the deck, and it's set back from the front of the house, as are the decks on all along that street. There's a whole bunch of similar-sized decks, similar placement. But one of your drawings has the room right up against the front of the house, which would be in front of where the existing deck is. What is your intention?
Oh, the deck is, the deck is not going to be any, excuse me, the room is not going to be any, is that what you're asking me?
Right.
If it's going to be closer to the street-
Closer to the street, yeah.
-it's going to be right exactly where the deck is.
Okay. Yeah. One of the drawings doesn't say that. Okay. That's the only question I had.
Thanks for that. I didn't, the drawing does show it at the front. I didn't pick up on that, but thank you for clarifying. Again, your testimony is this proposed room is the same spot as the existing deck. All right. So thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Gordon? Mr. Shaw has a question for you.
So I guess also, were you able to look at and consider any other options as far as setting it further back, or even setting it off of the back of the house? Are there any limitations regarding anything with the way the, either the construct of the house?
The construct, yeah.
Essentially something that would, you know, because looking at this, you know, kind of part of the counterargument is, why can't you do this room off the back of the house, and you wouldn't have the encroachment into the setback?
Yeah, the sliding door is already there. We would have to create a whole, you know, another, take out the back, basically, of the house there, and build a whole nother setup to have access out there. We do have a door on the side, so to get to the patio from the side, we would only, we'd also have to take down the deck, I would imagine, and we would only be, and we have, and there was already a walkway there and some other things that the previous homeowner had put in there. All of that would have to go away. We would only, it might even be unsafe, just have one or two feet, three feet of room to create a passway from the side to the back. And then, of course, like I said, we'd have to open up the whole back of the house, and it'd be a big job. And that might cause problems with the structure of the house, too. I don't-
Sure. I'm sorry. Well, I tell you what. Just hang in there. We'll have you at the microphone in a second. Were there any other questions for Mr. Gordon? Now it's time for anybody else who'd like to speak in favor, ma'am. And why don't you come up and let us know what's on your mind? You can stay there, too, if you want to give her moral support at the microphone. Hi, could we have your name?
My name is Donna Rassier Gordon, and I reside at 26 Syracuse Road in Nashua, New Hampshire.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you. And shortly after we purchased our home in April of 2016, we went through a great deal of effort and finances to put in a nice patio, which was professionally done, with crushed stone around the shed that existed in the back. So for us to revise our plans and to open up the back of our house instead of using the existing opening would cause us hardship, because we spent about $8,000 on that patio, which is very nice, and we enjoy it. So I just wanted to add that to my husband's comments.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Any questions for the Gordons? All right. We're all set. You could have a seat. Is there anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition about the proposed room at 26 Syracuse? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Yes? Mr. Lionell?
Well, I read the application, and I was initially not supportive, but I walked the street, and I noticed that almost every one of those houses has a deck in exactly the same position with pretty much the same lack of clearance to the property line. And there are just a few houses down, there is somebody who has built a room addition, like a, I guess, maybe a three-season room or something like that, in exactly that place. So what the Gordons are proposing is not at all out of character with that neighborhood. And the fact that there are so many similar-positioned decks there makes me wonder if the original builder had done that. Although they're all, the construction of them is not all the same, so I'm a little bit puzzled about that. But the more I looked at what was along that street, the more I'm inclined to support the request.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I'm supportive of it. I just wanted to get that clarification. I realize that, you know, and the other thing is, I think that's kind of key to note, is the use of the existing deck is like, you know, maybe been there since, you know, for at least a very long time. So the kind of idea of usage here of this encroachment, it's not something new. It's obviously changing it from the kind of open-air deck to a, you know, enclosed structure. But in some ways, it actually might almost be a little less impactful to the neighbors by having a kind of three-season type of structure. So, but generally, I am fine with it.
There's one other item I forgot to mention, which is that this deck, this, the neighbor's house, it's just a blank wall. There's no windows there. So that, the neighbor, and I guess it would be 24, wouldn't see any encroachment visually from their house.
Thanks for that. I didn't notice that. Mr. Welch?
Yeah, I'm in support. Thank you for the window comment. I didn't realize that either. When I drove the street, I mean, it's within the character of the neighborhood, so I have no issue. My only concern was the inconsistency in the drawing, but that was clarified.
All right. Ms. McKay?
I concur. And thanks to Steve for bringing up that window issue. I didn't notice that myself when I viewed the property, so just makes the decision easier. Thank you.
I'm in support also. I appreciate, Mr. Shaw, you asking the question about consideration otherwise. And, you know, I think we got a pretty solid answer on that, in that the side of the house is, and the internal way the house flows is set up that there's an entrance there, not in the back, plus, you know, there's the patio that's in the back. And, you know, to me, it's all credible. People buy a house, the deck's there, they're liking that, they fix up the back, and then all of a sudden, they're surprised with this problem. And I agree, I don't think it's out of character. So I think it's all good. Ms. Boris, did you have any thoughts on?
I concur with all members. I'm in support.
All right. Mr. Lionell?
Sir, I will do the honors, yes.
All right.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance request of Scott and Donna Gordon, address 26 Syracuse Road. The request is for a variance to encroach six feet into the 10-foot required left-side yard setback to replace an existing 8-by-16-foot deck with an 8-by-16 home addition. The variance is needed to enable the proposed use of the property, given the layout of the lot, and the benefit cannot be sawed by some other means. It's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. All of the affecting surrounding parcels have similar decks or sunrooms in that position, so it won't, it won't be out of character for the neighborhood. It's not contrary to the public interest, and substantial justice to the applicants would be served.
So motion on the table to approve, seconded by Mr. So motion on the table to approve, seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Shaw?
And just even though, by all appearances and intent, and since we didn't actually clarify it, I would just like to ask if we could add the stipulation that this is for a one-story addition. It's something that we've typically done with a lot of cases like this, just to make sure there's no misunderstanding, and it would not be expected to have a two-story type of addition in a location like this, but I think it just, I think it only further makes sure there's no, again, misunderstanding or misinterpretation.
Yeah, and, and also, if I could chime in, and just to clarify in the motion that it's at the same location of the existing deck, even though the testimony was that the drawing shows otherwise, would you, could you maybe add that to the motion?
Yes, okay. Amending the motion, a stipulation that the, this new sun, four-seasons room be a single-story, as indicated in the drawings attached to the application, and that it would occupy the exact same footprint of the existing deck.
Oh, thank you. And with that amended motion, it's seconded by Mr. Shaw, any discussion on the amended motion? Seeing none, a show of hands in favor. So that's unanimous, so your proposal's approved. Just remember, there's that 30-day window of appeal. You can pull your permits tomorrow. I would exercise caution, but that's, you can do what you want with that. If you have any questions, you can give Mr. Falk a call tomorrow. And with that, I'll close the public meeting on case number two. Good luck. Oh, you could just, oh, if you-
We'll be back when you, next time you come into City Hall, that's fine.
Yep.
I've never seen anybody bring their sign.
A lot of people don't.
I know. That's the first time.
I'm sorry?
Are they asked to? They are? Oh, okay, interesting.
I didn't know that.
As all the months I've been here, nobody, this is the first time.
I know.
About a sign.
People just bring them into the office.
Good to go. All right, let's keep going. I'm gonna open the public hearing on case number three. The owner is Jack Lebruto. The address is 61 Almont Street. The request is a variance to encroach five feet into the 20-foot required rear yard setback to construct and attach 20-by-22, single-story home addition. Hi, who's here to speak on this case tonight? If you'd like to come to the microphone and give us your name and address, and walk us through your application?
It's Sean Wilson. I live at 42 Kilray Road in Derry, New Hampshire. I'm a contractor, and a friend of Jack's. If the project's granted, I'd be doing the work. I understand you guys already read the question, so I'd just like to add some other comments, if I could, please.
Sure. Have at it.
Just a couple things. The streets surrounding that, so it's Cleveland, then Almont, and Wilson Street, this is information I just got off Google Earth, it's nothing I went to Town Hall to get permits or anything like that, but of those 17 houses, approximately 13 of them have had additions put on at some point in time. And of the lots themselves, it looks like all of them are rectangular-shaped except for two. One is the applicant's, which is Jack's, and the other one is the abutters, where the setback encroachment would affect. And just a sense of the encroachment, it's, it's only, it's a little less than 40 square feet, which is basically just a little bit bigger than one sheet of plywood. And that's, that's basically the hardship that he has right now, is that he has a small living room, wife and kids, family's growing, he loves the neighborhood, he'd like to just put on a big room in the back, that's, it wouldn't be seen from the street, and then that would just satisfy his needs.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Wilson. Any questions? I actually have a question. As you mentioned, most of the lots are rectangular, but this, call it an L-shaped lot.
Correct.
And, you know, your proposed addition is, if you're standing on the street on the left side of the house, which is like, is furthest away, you might say, from, to minimize the encroachment. So I just, I guess I'm just clarifying that for the record, that this is, as you said, an unusual-sized lot, and it puts a kind of a pinch point in the back-right corner of your proposed addition, 'cause if you were to stay out of the, that rear, that setback, it would be, you know, a pretty small addition.
Correct, yes.
Or you'd have kind of a strange corner cut out.
Exactly.
Okay. Well, thank you for clarifying that for me.
Sure, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Wilson? Mr. Lionell?
I'm a little bit puzzled, I mean, comparing the, the drawing of, of the proposal, and then I'm looking at this, at the map, essentially, and it suggests that there is already something sticking out the back of the house. I couldn't see it.
It's a, existent small deck that's in disrepair right now.
Okay, so that deck would be removed-
Correct.
And replaced by this, and it, it looks like there's, what, a pool and, and something else back here also?
Correct. That has since gone away. That is, was in disrepair, and that was-
So those are, are being removed.
The pool had to be removed, the deck's plan is to be removed.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Wilson? I think we're all set.
All right, thank you.
I think, I don't see anyone in the audience. I'll just say, so there's no opposition? We don't have any written opposition, so I'll close the public. Oh, was there anybody else who wanted, did you wanna speak in favor? I'm sorry, are you all set? All right. Thanks. So there's no other testimony in favor or against this application. I'll close the public hearing and open the public meetings. Thoughts, Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I'm good with it, and I think the thing that's especially noteworthy to me in one sense is that this encroachment is really, I know it's one of the, it's one of these deals where, yes, it has to be defined as a rear setback, but in kind of function to the kind of primarily, if you will, affected property, it's more like a side yard setback. So it's, it's one of those things, by definition, it has to be treated this way, but functionally, it really is more like a side yard setback, so, and you, so to me, it's, they're not going even close into what would be if we were just able to enforce a side yard setback there. So to me, that's really, I think, a key part of this, so, and I'm fine with it. Looks like Mr. Falk might wanna make a comment.
Yeah, it's like this little, I don't know if everyone can see, this little yellow piece is where the encroachment is, that little corner, like you said, the sheet, size of a sheet of plywood. It's actually, it's almost encroaching into two setbacks, but we, we thought, you know, it's in the back of the house, it's not on the side of the house, and that this back corner up here, that upper L shape, that part there would be a side yard, but it's probably about, you know, 15 or 18 feet south of that, so we thought, you know, just to treat it as a rear setback. Either way, it's the same, it's the same issue, and, you know, we, we just thought, we'll just, just advertise it as, as part of the rear, 'cause it is part of the rear of the house, but you're right, it could be looked at as either or both, but we thought we would just be reasonable and just call it one.
Yeah, just kind of further. I mean, to me, I think, it seemed that the technicality kind of probably forced that definition, but my point was, like, the reality of kind of the way the lot functions versus that adjacent property, it ends up being, why, I think the relief in this case is reasonable to, to grant, versus the technical kind of having to interpret it that way, so.
We thought the same, thank you.
Any thoughts on the matter, Mr. Lionell?
I don't have a problem with this, given the shape of the lot and the minimal encroachment into, into the rear setback. This looks fine to me.
Mr. Welsh?
I have no issue. It's, it's minimal impact.
All right. My thoughts, I'm in support also. I appreciate it's a single story, you know? I thought, well, may, maybe, could it, could, could it be maybe grieving somebody, you know, that one abutter there? But the fact that it's a single story, I, I think it's pretty minimal, so I'm good with it as it is. Ms. McKay?
I'm also good with it as it is. For that tiny little corner, it doesn't seem logical to say no.
Ms. Boras?
I'm also in support.
All right. Well, thank you for your thoughts. Mr. Welsh, would you like to make a motion? That's-
No.
That's fine.
Yeah, that's good. Mr. Lionell?
I remember that feeling.
Okay. Sure. I know the feeling. Like to make a motion to approve the variance request. Owner is Jack Lebruto, address of 61 Almont Street, and the request is a variance to encroach five foot into the 20-foot required rear yard setback to construct and attach 20-by-22-foot single-story home addition. The variance is needed to, to enable the use, this use of the property. The property is L-shaped, and the encroachment is actually very minimal. There's no other reasonable way to accommodate this. It is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. There are many other similar additions. It will not affect property values of surrounding parcels. There's no public interest problem, and substantial justice to the applicant would be served.
All right. The motion is seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion on the motion? Show of hands in favor of the motion. So that's unanimous, so your application's approved. Just remember, there's a 30-day window of appeal, but you can pull your permits tomorrow if you wish. And with that, I'll close, oh, also, wish you good luck on the construction, if you go through with it. With that, I'll close the public meeting on case number three. Next order? All right, have a good night, good luck with it. Next order of business, a long set of minutes from the September 12th meeting. Myself, Mr. Boucher, Ms. McKay, and Mr. Welsh was here. I've looked through these minutes, I didn't see any adjustments needed. Did anybody have any? Mr. Welsh?
Yeah, the only thing to note is the incorrect spelling of my last name.
Ah, it's a C-H.
C-H.
So.
Other than that, it was fine.
So noted.
Yep.
Noted and apologies. As I typed them. Sorry about that. We'll fix it.
That's fine.
So three of us were here who, so I guess I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of September 12th, as presented. Is there a second motion? Ms. McKay? And I think the three of us are gonna vote on this. Mr. Welsh, so a show of hands in favor of those minutes. So that's the three of us. Mr. Boucher isn't here, and Mr. Shaw, Ms. Boras abstained, so those minutes carry.
And I also abstained, 'cause I wasn't here.
Yes, thank you for clarifying that. Mr. Lionell abstains also, he wasn't here. Next order of business is we have our agenda for the next meeting, October 24th, and we'll take a look at that and see if we think there's any regional impact. Where's Marlowe's Road? First one?
Is that, is that in? Near Browning and Scott. It's in the poet's streets.
Yeah. I don't see any regional impact myself. Mr. Lionell is a no.
I do not.
Mr. Shaw is a no.
No.
Mr. Welsh is a no. Ms. McKay is a no. So we'll say that's unanimous, that there's no regional impact. Is there any other business to be brought before the board? Oh, we did get-
The dates for next year.
Dates for next year. I haven't thoroughly assessed that yet, but hopefully, maybe, can we plan on the next meeting, or if you wanna take a look at that? And Ms. McKay, do you have any comments on that?
Yes, we had said that during the summer months, we were gonna take, either July or August, there was only gonna be, I think, one meeting, not two. We were gonna do like-
I guess that, maybe that was discussed.
It was.
Mr. Falk, I did talk to him about it, and I'm gonna pull up some data.
Could that be a bylaw change?
Well, that's one thing, it's, it would-
It'd be a bylaw.
It would be a bylaw change, and I'm trying to, if you just bear with me a minute, see if I can come up with Mr. Falk's email. I, I had asked him, how many cases did we have in the two July meetings in the recent past? So in 2017, for the two July meetings, we had five and five, in other words, five. And then in 2016, it was two and five. 2015 was 10 and 11. 2014 was nine and nine cases. 2013 was three cases and four cases. 2012 was five cases and two cases. 2011 is four cases and two cases. And 2010 is two cases at the first meeting, six cases at the second meeting. So there was a, that was a data as to quantity of cases we've had in the recent past in July. I guess my thought on it was, that was a surprisingly high amount to me.
Most of it predates me from sitting on this board, so.
But I'm, you know, like, say this year, we had a five and a five. If, if we had one meeting, that would be, you know, probably 10 cases, you know, and the two and five in 2016, that would be seven. 2015, the 10, 11, 21 cases in one night. So I, I, while I would, was liking the idea myself of, of a one meeting July, the data for me, I, I don't know, I mean, if everybody was in support of it, maybe I'd go along with it, but I was a little bit leery of it myself, but I didn't know.
Mr. Falk has a-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I, I mean, basically, you know, with us, July is right in the middle of construction season, like I was telling you before, that's right in the middle of summer where everybody's building something, and it's tough. I mean, I know it's tough in the planning work, 'cause sometimes they have, you know, some heavy agendas, but they've been doing that, people are used to that, and they've been doing that for quite some time. And this would be a big change, so I don't know if there'd be any outcry from the development or the building community to see that we'd only have one meeting in one of the busiest months, so. I mean, we all agree that the summer months, I mean, especially the first meeting in July is when everybody, a lot of people go on vacation, or, or even in August, so. And I think, you know, that the numbers are gonna be consistent in June and August as well, so. They're pretty consistent throughout the year.
Yeah. Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I, I don't think we should be pulling that one. If anything, I think we should go back and look at, like, I think we've seen, if anything, like, the second one in February, that last February one, I think we've, we've had no ca, one time, I think we actually had no cases, and, you know, we've postponed, and we had like a snowstorm, we had one case on an agenda. So I think, if anything, it would be more like somewhere in the winter that, especially before, like, construction season's really gearing up, so, again, maybe it'd be January or February or something, but, you know.
Second meeting in February is usually the one where we've had a canceled field of snow.
That seems like that's a lull for whatever, but, but I think, yeah, as much as, you know, and I, I know I've probably had as much struggles as anybody, but to, to attend, and, you know, with this vacation season, you know, kind of height of vacation season for a lot of folks, doesn't seem like the numbers really support it, so I think, I don't really think we should probably be adjusting, at least there.
Any other thoughts on that July agenda?
No, I guess it was a nice thought, because it was really difficult for all of us to, to do that. I know I, myself, was away, so. We can dream.
We had the Conservation Commission, they went from two meetings a month down to one for the whole year, but they just weren't getting enough cases. You know, that's another thing, the planning board has been this way forever.
At least, I'll be here in July.
Yeah, historic district meeting, they meet once a month as well, so. We meet the most.
So apparently, in December, though, we're only gonna have one.
We always have one.
That's always been the case.
Okay. Good.
Because the second meeting will be the week of Christmas.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna do that.
All right, so I think, exhausted that. So the, the reason that Mr. Falk provides this calendar is so that we have the opportunity to, to look at it, and if there's any potential changes we wanna make, if there's a conflict with, you know, this time, he's put the holidays in, 'cause in the past, we've also missed a few things where we've scheduled a meeting, like on election night.
Yeah.
Actually, though, I wonder if September 11th would be primary, state primaries, because in 2018, there'll be the state elections, and I thought the primaries for those offices are somewhere around the second Tuesday in September, so we might wanna see if we, that could be an election day.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't, I don't.
That'd be the one date I would, I think we should check on.
Yeah, I think we'll take a look at that, and I'll, you know.
Good catch.
Bring it back, next, next meeting. Bring it back next, next meeting.
And what we've done is had, had, like, the election, the bylaw changes, we would have it the next day, like on Wednesday.
Because sometimes there are special elections which come up during the year, like a mayoral runoff election or something like that, and if that's on a Tuesday of our meeting, which we didn't know in advance...
Well, and, and the regular November election can be on the eighth, because it's the first Tuesday after the first Monday of November, so it, it can be on the eighth, and we had that one year where we pushed to the ninth, so. Actually, I think it was last year.
Last year?
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
All right, well, with no other business, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Could I, oh, just ask a question? I'm looking at the agenda. What happened to the Lynn Street application that was tabled to the...
Well, it shows, it was shown on tonight's agenda, but it's, it's supposed to be tabled to the next meeting. That, it was tabled to the next meeting, I still have not received anything from DPW. The person who was going to reply to me won't be back in the office until next Monday, so I still don't have anything yet, and I, I still don't know if I'll have anything before the meeting.
Because this is, this is a pretty big agenda, and that was a very contentious case.
The first case, I believe, is going to be withdrawn on Henry David. The second case is Lynn Street, that'll be, I believe the public hearing was closed, and it's just a public meering, meeting, so that...
Yeah, so it is just a public meeting.
Just a public meeting, and then the other, the others aren't scheduled.
Okay, well, I was just wondering, because I, I didn't see it here. I expected to see it here.
Thank you. I guess I get back a motion to adjourn. Is there a second of the motion? Mr. Shaw, all in favor? And so that's unanimous, so we're adjourned at 7:21.